I'd like to call the meeting in the Montgomery County School Board to order with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Board members and members of the community and staff, welcome. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and I need a motion to do so. So moved. Anybody have any questions regarding the agenda or revisions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now have an agenda. The first item on our agenda is honors, awards, and recognition. It's a great time for the Board to recognize the significant accomplishments of everyone in our school systems and in the community, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Blackburn at this time.
Okay, I'm going to ask Dr. John Staten if he would come forward. He's going to do the honors and recognitions this evening.
We will begin our honors, awards, and recognitions for this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Lois Graham, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, to come forward to introduce the first recognition.
Tonight, we will introduce two Eastern Montgomery students who have been named as state grade-level winners in the area of handwriting. I would like their principal, Mrs. Denise Boyle, Principal of Eastern Montgomery Elementary School, to come forward at this time to introduce the winners.
Good evening, Board members, Ms. Blackburn and the community. Each year at Eastern Montgomery, students participate in the annual Xander Blasor National Handwriting Contest. Students submit an entry to their homeroom teachers, and each grade level then selects a winner for the grade level to represent our school in the contest. The school grade-level winners join thousands of other entries across the nation to become the state grade-level winners, national grade-level winners, and grand national-level champions. This year, for the first time in our history, we've had two state-grade-level winners. Each student received an engraved Xander Blasor medallion, and each teacher was awarded an engraved Glass Diamond Award. It is my pleasure to introduce to you our winners. Will Drew Smith and his family please come forward?
Drew is here this evening. He is a second-grade student at our school, and his teacher, Mrs. Patricia Schooler, is also here. Ms. Schooler, would you stand, please? Thank you. He's accompanied tonight by his parents, Angela and Andrew Smith, and his sister Madison. Thank you.
Our next winner is a fourth grader, Kelton Bridger, and he's here accompanied by his mom, Mrs. Dreama Schooler, his grandparents, Bill and Patricia Schooler, and his teacher, Mrs. Julie Griffin. If they'll come forward, please.
Kelton is a fourth grader at our school. His mom is a former student of ours as well, and Mrs. Schooler has taught for me for the last 23 years, so we are very honored indeed to have Kelton. And if you noticed, it was two boys that won the handwriting competition at our school, not girls, as usual. Kelton, congratulations.
The next award is for Career and Technology Education Award. Rick Weaver, Supervisor for Career and Technology Education, will present the CTE Award.
Good evening. It's my honor to present to you individuals or groups representing four different program areas who have achieved recognition at the state level in career and technical education student organizations. We will start, and I will invite their teachers up with them, we will start with Kristin Morris and Mr. Chase Low. Kristin is an FFA State Degree recipient. This means that she's achieved a level of accomplishment in the state that few FFA students achieve by excelling in both the co-curricular program and in her agriculture program while a student at Christiansburg High School. Next, we have Justice Underwood and Ms. Joyce Price, her teacher. Justice is a member of the Skills USA Program at Blacksburg High School, and has such underwent a competitive election process at the state convention, and was elected as the Regional Four State Vice President by her peers in Skills USA. Quite an honor, Justice Underwood. I'll now ask Ms. Kim Radford, the teacher, and four students, I think the fourth one showed up, four students from Blacksburg High School. Because these students won a variety of awards in the DECA State Competition, I'm going to ask Ms. Radford to explain to you who they are and what they won.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us this evening. I want to introduce Brandon Walters. This is Sarah Fitch and Kaylee Norton. They were our school-based enterprise team this year. We have a school store at Blacksburg High School that we're really proud of, and they wrote an 80-page manual that was gold-certified, and then they went to our state competition and presented what we do at our school and won first place overall. And I also wanted to recognize Kaylee and Sarah because they went to Nationals and got third place in the nation for their presentation, so we're really, really proud of them. And then I also wanted to congratulate Sean Bissell, and he won first place in our Human Resource Management event at state competition. And he is also our First State Officer for DECA from Blacksburg High School. He is the Executive Vice President of Virginia State DECA, so he's getting ready to take over for that as well, so we're really proud of him, too, and thank you for recognizing them.
And finally, we have Ms. Stephanie Crawford with a sizable group of middle schoolers, and I'll ask her to come forward with her students, and she will tell you what they accomplished at the state level.
Hello, and thanks for having us here tonight. I would like to recognize a few students who won some outstanding awards at the state level this year. We have Elijah Hodges, who won first place in Technical Design. It's right here. We also have, let's see, Lily's not here. We have first place in Agriculture and Biotechnology. This is Yumisha Volaconte and Molly Teller. And then we have first place in Electrical Applications was Jiyoung Lee, and he can't be here tonight. And first place in Dragster Design is also Elijah Hodges here. And then we have first place in STEM Animation is Joel Hodges, Tomasz, Camilio, Alister Bushy, Andrew Wamparan, and Michael Chin. They're over here. In addition to that, I also have Jonah Feick with me tonight. He's over here, and he was elected as the State Advisory Council, and he's the Regional TSA President for the Blue Ridge Region. In addition to those awards, we also won first place for a Chapter Excellence Award for Blacksburg Middle School at the state level. We won second place for Outstanding Middle School in Virginia. They won third place for Outstanding School Division from Montgomery County Public Schools, and in high school, they won 10th place for Outstanding High School. We've had just a few high schoolers go with us, so congratulations to these students.
And now to recognize those aspiring to become administrators and have participated in the Aspiring Administrator Academy. Joe McElandro, Director of Human Resources, will come forward to announce these recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Staten, members of the Board, and Ms. Blackburn. I'd first like to start off by thanking the central office staff that helped put this together, because it was a collaboration of a lot of folks who put this academy together for us. In particular, the Curriculum Department helped tremendously with different parts of this academy. Also, we had two principals participate, did some presentations, Dr. Kevin Sears and Kelly Rourke, so I'd like to thank them tonight as well. The Aspiring Administrator Academy was our attempt to try to harness our folks from within, harness the talent that we have here in Montgomery County. And we had 17 participants this year that went to, came out and participated in four different modules. The first module was understanding the structure of Montgomery County schools. The second was data analysis. The third was communication and public relations, and the last one was interviewing skills. So we think we hit the ground running, and we had some good feedback on this, and we hope to advance this in the years to come. But we have 14 participants here tonight that we'd like to recognize, and I'd like to say that they did this voluntarily, and we've got an outstanding group of people that are in the pipeline for coming into administration. I'm real proud of this group and the work that they did during this academy. So I'm going to announce these, if you could come forward when you're announced, please. Cheryl Burrow Graves. And Rebecca, you're out. There were three participants that weren't able to make it tonight, and that's Angela Cornett, Sherry Sharp, and Shannon McLennan. So I present to you the Aspiring Administrator Class of 2014.
There won't be a fire alarm go off, though.
For the next award, Dr. Graham, would you please come back to the podium to recognize the Governor's Awards to the schools?
Good evening again. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize three schools who have earned the Board of Education Excellence Awards. These awards are given to schools who exceed the state and federal accountability standards. I will say that over the years, the rigor has increased and increased, and only 71 schools earned this statewide. So our first award, I would ask that Carol Kahler come forward. She will accept the award on behalf of Gilbert Lincoln Elementary. Megan Marshall will come forward to accept on behalf of Harding Avenue Elementary. And Crystal Sparks will come forward to accept on behalf of Kipps Elementary. She is acting as principal-designee at this time.
And I don't have an honor or a recognition, but I do have someone that I'd like to introduce to the group, and I thought this would be an appropriate time since we're going to take a break, and if you didn't get a chance to meet her this afternoon, you may get a chance to meet her at the break. I'm very pleased to introduce to you Dr. Patricia Nelson, Pat. Dr. Nelson is joining us as our new Director of Special Education. She comes to us from Shenandoah County, where she currently serves as the Director of Special Education. She brings a great deal of experience and expertise. I think she's the right person to pick up where we are, continue our tradition of excellence, and bring us a few new good ideas also. So welcome, Pat. We're very glad to have you.
Board members, audience, we will now take a 10-minute break so that Ms. Blackburn and the Board members can congratulate the tonight's award recipients. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. The next item on our agenda is public address. This is where the Board sets aside 30 minutes with a maximum of three minutes per citizen to address the Board on items of educational interest. At this time, in front of me, I do not see anyone who has signed up in advance to speak at public address, therefore, I'll open it up to the audience and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address this Board on items of educational interest. Seeing no one, public address is now closed. Next item on the agenda is the Personnel Report. Board members, you have a personnel report in front of us to approve. I seek a motion for approval. So moved. Second? Any discussion on the Personnel Report? All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Financial Reports. We have a payment of the bills. I need a motion to pay the bills. Second? Any discussion on the bills? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Financial Summary Report. I need a motion to approve the summary report. So moved. Second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Reports, Recommendations, and Announcements. Ms. Blackburn.
Actually, Mr. Jones, the first item happens to be a public hearing.
Oh, it does.
And it's the public hearing on our new six-year plan, which is being presented this evening, and the document represents the work of many stakeholders who are very interested in the success of Montgomery County Public Schools. And I'd like to especially thank Dr. Lois Graham and her team for their leadership and commitment to excellence throughout the process, but you usually handle the public hearings, so I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Well, therefore, we have a public hearing. Has been posted for public review and is now available for public comment. I now open it up to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to step forward and address this Board related to the 2014 to 2020 Comprehensive Six-Year Plan? Seeing no one, public hearing on the Comprehensive Six-Year Plan is now closed. So I'll turn it back over to Ms. Blackburn.
Okay, and our very next item actually asks the Board to approve this six-year plan for Montgomery County Public Schools, a roadmap for our future. And again, one of the things that's been going on over the last few days, actually since we last met with you all and did some work on the comprehensive plan and narrowed down some potential mottos or slogans for Montgomery County Public Schools, we've been having voting for the general public. And I'd like to ask Dr. Graham if she would step forward and tell us a little bit about that, and most importantly, announce the motto. Well, first, we would like- Envelope, please. Let me draw it out, just a little bit. We want to thank the Board, the Board members and the leadership team for participating in a work session on June 3rd around the development of the six-year plan. The design team spent a significant amount of time gathering data, crafting a plan for publication, and ideas for implementation. So I would like that team to stand, if they would, for just a moment. And really do want to thank them and recognize the time that it took. As you will recall, as Ms. Blackburn said, our last action at the work session was to narrow our list of possible mottos so that we could survey our stakeholders. We did that, and the motto that won was engage, encourage, empower. So thank you very much for helping us with that, and with that, I will close and take any questions about the six-year plan that you have.
Board members, you have any questions for Dr. Graham?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. First off, I want to thank you for involving the Board in this event. I thought, and we also included Mr. Jones, who was in California. This is technology where we're headed. It was wonderful to have him take part in this event. I also want to thank you very much for including Sean, the student. Sean Bissell, I thought, was a great addition to the program, and I think once we involve the students, the staff, the Board, and then the public, I think we've done due diligence, and I think I was very pleased with the whole process. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Graham?
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, you have this, this is for action? Asking us to approve this? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So I need a motion for approval. So moved. Any further questions on the six-year plan as presented this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? You now have a six-year plan. Motion carries and approved. Thank you all for your hard work.
That's for sure.
Our next item is the Title I Funding Application. You saw this at our meeting on June 3rd for the first time. This is the second time that we brought it to you. It's presented tonight for your approval.
I move that we approve the plan.
Second? Any discussion on the gifted plan as presented?
Title.
I'm sorry.
I was going to call it plan, I guess, the application.
I was one eye to my head. Apologize. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the next item is the Gifted Plan. Actually, you had an opportunity to view this plan at your June 3rd meeting and had an opportunity to ask some questions. If you have questions, we have Diane in the audience again, but it is presented this evening for your consideration for approval.
So moved. Any discussion on the gifted plan as presented?
I want to make another statement. Diane, did you lead this?
I'm the G H P.
Okay, anyway, I just want to say that I went over this plan, and I thought it was very thorough and a beautiful job, and I don't know how you find the time to do stuff like this.
It's a collaborative effort.
Well, thank you and your staff for a great job. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Diane.
Any further questions, comments? All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? You now have a gifted plan. Congratulations. Thank you for your hard work.
The next item is the Second Reading of the Proposed Policy Changes for the 2014-15 School Year. They are presented this evening for your approval.
Need a motion? So moved.
Second?
And now opening up for any questions, comments related to the policy changes?
Couple of the policies at the end of the policy statement, it does not include June 2014 revised date. Is there any reason for that, or they are just missing for those particular ones? One for, 1-4.1 and 7-1.3.
They were oversights on our part, but what happens with these policies is, once you approve them, right now, they're attachments in your board docs, but they actually become integrated into the board doc system. We can't leave that off. The system won't allow us.
Okay.
So there's sort of a checks and balances that exists there, but thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Your legislative policy updates have been approved.
The next item is also policy updates, and these are largely related to reflect the new high school schedule. So essentially, it removes the 4x4 block information and brings our policies into sync with the new schedule at our high schools. And they're being presented this evening for the first time, but we are asking that you consider waiving the second reading, waiving the first reading and approving these policies so that we can go ahead and get them in our printed materials for the fall.
So the motion would need to state that we're going to waive the first reading and go straight to approval.
I make the motion to waive the first reading and move right to the second.
Okay.
My second.
Second? Any discussion on the policies that have been presented?
Exactly what does it mean in layman's terms?
It means that we took the language that says things like, for a block schedule, a 4x4 block schedule, that five days would be the equivalent of 10 days to a regular schedule. So basically, we don't have those four- So basically, we don't have those four double-block classes anymore, so it changes some of our procedures and policies. And we just brought it into line with that because now all of our kids are going to be on a comparable schedule from school to school.
All four high schools?
All four high schools are going to have two single periods and three block classes.
So a youngster moving from one school to another will be able to fit into a situation that they're rather familiar with, rather than trying to figure out what's going on?
That's right. And be able to-
That's good.
-move smoothly into the same credit-earning situation.
Excellent.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy updates have been approved.
The next item is authorization for intent to participate in the state health insurance plan. I provided this to you at your last meeting as an information item, and I had very little information at that time. Since then, we do believe that it continues to be in the legislative document, that it is authorized for the state to do a study to determine what the rates would be if they expanded the pool of eligibility to the state insurance plan to include public schools. We did get a notification from, was it DOE? Virginia DOE?
Department of Human Resource.
Department, okay, Department of Human Resource Management that said the letter of intent is not binding. However, they do ask that your intent be serious because they're going to include those districts who express an interest in the determination of the actuarial charts that would define what the cost for the health insurance plan would be. So it is my recommendation that the board approve us doing the letter of intent, knowing that it is not a binding letter. And once the rates are in, then we can look at it from the perspective of, are the benefits what we want for our employee? And is it cost, potential cost savings, or at least cost neutral to the school division? So otherwise, we would not have an opportunity to participate at a later date.
How does this affect our next item on the agenda?
It doesn't really have an effect. It would become, the earliest that we could become involved in the state health plan would be July 1 of 2016, I believe. So we would have a full year and a half in our self-insurance pool. So the first year we would have, if we were to go into the state plan, the first year we would have a 12-month plan, which is the one you're approving, and it would run from October to October. Then the next year, if we were moving in the direction of going into the state health plan, we would have to have a six-month RFP for our benefit structure so that we could go in to the state plan in July of 2016. But it's really too early to know. You do have some issue with payout on the end of a self-insurance plan because you're responsible for the claims that may have been incurred but not paid. So you'd have to keep your pool intact to cover those potential payout claims.
Right.
And I thought I understood this to be more, the first part of this is like a study where they're going to gather their facts and their data and understand what the costs are actually going to be.
That is correct. It's an actuarial study about this one.
Okay.
Looking long range, it could have, it may not be anything we're interested in.
Right.
And the fact that they're wanting you to be very serious about it if you're signing this, well, how can you know if you're serious without knowing the cost?
True. But at least now we know we're not bound on the decision, which it was a little scary.
Do we have that in writing?
A lot scary.
Can I make an assumption that there's still no timeline out there?
There is no timeline as far as providing us with what the cost of the plans would be, but it would come back to us and you would have an opportunity to say, yes, we want to pursue it.
Yeah.
Or no, we don't.
Eventually.
Any further questions or comments? And do it, we got a motion? Okay, just one, two. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones. We don't have a motion.
Okay.
I thought you were asking me if there was a motion to be made.
Okay.
And there is. I apologize for that confusion.
Okay, not a problem.
I make a motion that we authorize for intent to participate, to participate in the state health insurance plan.
Need a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Over the last several months, Montgomery County Public Schools staff have been in conversation with the county and our insurance consultants, both for the county and for Montgomery County Public Schools, about the potential to create a shared self-insurance pool. The work has been accomplished, and it appears that this can be a cost-savings option for Montgomery County Public Schools while actually maintaining our preferred insurance coverage with even some enhancements that will, I think, satisfy some of the concerns that our employees had about the move to the HMO plan. Joe McElandro will provide you with a brief presentation on this plan. I'd like to, first of all, commend Joe and the MCPS Insurance Committee for their work and for the positive benefits that are emerging, both from the perspective of cost and from the perspective of benefits. Joe?
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn, members of the board. If you can recall, back in the fall, as Ms. Blackburn stated, prior to November, we started investigating the funding options, and we worked with Keith Sharp and McNairy, and we presented to the board, and we had several decision points that we needed to make. First decision point was whether or not to go fully insured or self-insured, and we laid out those options and what they are. And it's clear that the self-insurance model was one that would benefit Montgomery County Public Schools. The school board approved that for us to move forward with that model and investigating that model in November. The next decision point dealt with deciding which carriers would be best. We put out an RFP, and we had several companies respond to it. We interviewed three of them with the insurance committee, and the insurance committee is made up of employees and it was school board members as well. And it was decided that Anthem would be the best carrier for Montgomery County Schools moving forward. The school system and the county put together a combined RFP. That combined RFP had several of the same companies respond. And during their presentation, they, Anthem was chosen as well to be the carrier for both. It's important to keep in mind, though, that we were, even though we were coming together, we were going to remain separate in some ways, and I'll explain that in just a few minutes. Now, we needed to make the decision, do we merge with the county? If you recall, some of the key points that McNairy brought to point was consolidation would help fix costs. Those are the administrative costs that are associated with a self-insurance plan. But the consolidation would also increase claims costs to the plans. In other words, you're adding more lives, so more people are going to have claims in that plan. And because the county would constitute only 25% of the combined, they, McNairy had to work on some assumptions. They worked on the assumption that the claims that up to that date were, would continue forward. Well, they didn't exactly continue the way McNairy had it anticipated. We had several large claims that came in, and those large claims hurt us in the long run. On the flip side, the county had a very good year. So they picked a great year to go self-insured. And they will have a reserve at the end of the year because of it, more than likely. So it's important to realize those things when we're moving forward because the data that I'm showing you here, if you look at this data, when we, when Tom McKay, the consultant for the county, and he's with KSPH, when he looked at this data, he saw that we were going to look at a 4.8% increase in the self-insured plan. Well, what he didn't have in that is up-to-date claims, one, and second was, he didn't have the new funding model that we approved. In other words, to have employees default to the HMO and buy up to the PPO if they so choose. So that does change the projections. So it's important to note that because when I'll show you in a minute why that affects it. But in the combined quote, he took that and he took that data that we gave him about the payment plan and combined it with the county's and saw that we would see a 2.1% increase in our rates for next year. So the numbers you see here are the numbers that we have in the program itself. Okay? These aren't figures to talk about costs. These are the number of employees that take these plans. So the 2.1% represents an annual premium of $10 million, which is a 2.1% increase. If you recall, we budgeted 2.9%, so there's a slight savings here in going and combining with the county and pooling us together. And there's several reasons for that, but in the big overall picture is that we're able to, again, spread the amount of claims and premiums over more people, more lives covered, more protection you have, if you will. So there is a $92,000 savings here by going with the county than what we anticipated with it. And I'll let Ms. Blackburn address that savings, which she recommends for that. But in the planned considerations, there's some of the things that we, I noticed also with some of the feedback that we received. One is that people were a little apprehensive of the HMO because of the gatekeeper. The gatekeeper is your primary care physician who you have to go to to get a authorization to go to a specialist. In the self-insured plan, we're able to remove that gatekeeper. Okay? So we're, we did that, and those numbers that you see reflect that change as well. So now, there is, there is little difference between the HMO and the PPO. Okay? And we gave you those numbers of the physicians and the hospitals and the cost and all those things when we presented before. One additional thing that we're recommending in this renewal is add additional tier of employee plus children. And that's, we say that versus family, and I'll show you why that is important on the next slide. What employee children does is it allows a layer between employee plus one, which we currently have. We currently have a structure that is employee, employee plus child, employee plus spouse, or family. So it's essentially employee plus one. By adding this layer in there, or this offer, a single parent could get this for multiple children, or husbands and wives or employees and their spouses can determine whether to cover their children on our plan without having to go to the family because a lot of employers cover employee only. Montgomery County Schools is one of them. So now, they can get a plan that's much cheaper but cover their entire family. And you can see the cost difference in those. So this is an important layer that we've put in, and I think it's an additional benefit for the employees.
It's actually a significant savings if you're a single parent with just, let's say, two children or three children. You've been having to purchase employee plus family at $1,051.39 based on this rate sheet, and now you will be able to purchase employee plus children at $455. I mean, it's a huge difference for employees who may not need to insure a spouse through our plan.
Correct. So these are the recommendations that we're making, and these, again, are proposed rates that we're looking at for the new year. We're still working on finalizing the contracts and negotiations with Anthem, but I feel fairly certain these will not change. And these do represent a 12-month, that's the other thing to look at these, because if you look at our figures online right now, they represent a 10-month. It is not recommended that we, in a self-insurance plan, that we pay out in 10 months. To show a steady stream of income as well as outgoing payment of the premiums, it's recommended that we switch to a 12-month deduction. What that means for employees is less per month, each month, but at the two months that they normally would see no deduction, they'll still see a deduction. So there's pluses and minuses to both, but I think with this, it will lower their monthly, but in the long run, it will also make it easier to predict and to pay those premiums, I mean, those claims when they come in.
When do employees sign up for their insurance? Is it July 1 or?
No, ma'am. They sign up right before the start of school, so we'll have open enrollment in August.
August, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We've already started to frame the education campaign because we know we're going to have to do a lot of work with our employees to, you know, help them make sure they make the very best choice for their personal situation.
So at the end of the day, the overall benefit plan to the employer's employees' family is not changed at all. They're not going to see an increase in co-pays or services or benefits or basically?
No, sir. There's no change to the plan design.
There's no negative change. There are some positive changes.
Yeah. I think there's positive changes.
But there are no negative changes, really, other than the fact that the employee, the employee who wants the preferred provider option will have to pay 30, the employee will have to pay, is it $30, Joe?
Yes, ma'am. It's reflected here. The employee only would be $30, and that's pre-tax, so it's probably about 20, 20, between $20 and $23 a month. They'll see a net difference in their pay if they prefer the PPO over the HMO.
Right. And there's no change in the drug plan at all?
There is no change in the drug plan, the deductibles, all of that remains the same. There's no plan design, internal plan design to the HMO or the PPO, other than the gatekeeper being removed and the added tier. So we'd like to recommend that the board consider these options in moving forward with the county. And if there's any questions now, I'll entertain those as well.
So let me give a, can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the, authorize the administration to implement a combined self-funded health insurance with the county.
Second?
Motion in a second. Now we'll open it up for discussion. Do we have any more questions for administration related to this plan?
Thank you for all the work that you've done to do this.
Yep, this is very important.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely important. Hearing no further questions or any further comments, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Your action is approved.
So back to the savings amount.
I'm going to talk about it with this next agenda item. The next agenda item is the 2013-2014 fiscal year enclosed, but the one I'm going to talk about, the $92,000 savings, will be the next one, which is the budget status update. So I'd like to do this H first. Essentially, this is something that we've done each year when we did not have meetings in July. And what it does is authorize me to sign the, for the payment of the invoices in June, and then we bring them to you in your next board meeting, which would be August the 3rd. But essentially, it allows us to continue to do business, and then I bring them back to you after. to you after the July meetings.
I'd like to make a motion that would authorize the superintendent to review and approve payment of the final June invoices for the 2013-14 school operating and school nutrition budgets.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. It's approved.
Okay. So the next item is the budget status update. So as you know, the legislature did reach agreement on a budget, which they have sent to the governor, and it has not yet been signed by the governor. The budget, as approved by the two legislative houses to advance to the governor, would include a loss of state funding for Montgomery County Public Schools in a range between $50,000 and $70,000. So what we will be called upon to do is how to cover that in our budget. There are actually three things that will play into doing that. From our first review of the information that we've received, it appears that there are two categories of employee, employer contributions that are being reduced. One of them is the retiree health insurance plan, and the other is the group life insurance plan. And it appears that the legislative packet reduces the percentage that the employer has to pay towards those expenses. So preliminary look is that we might be able to get as much as $40,000, $50,000 in that, in savings from those. So my recommendation will be to the board that we, first of all, take those savings and anything that is then still uncovered, that we look at that residual reserve that we have in the self-insurance pool of $92,000 to fill that hole. And what that does is preserve the integrity of your budget. So instead of us having to come back in here and rehash all the really tough decisions that have been made, there appears to be some easy ways to resolve the problem. If losing money is ever something you can handle easily, we do at least have some places to go that would not be disruptive to the budget that you have approved. So I wanted to make you aware of that. You know, the county is kind of asking us, how are you going to fill the void? And we're saying to them that we believe that we have a way to fill the void that would not be disruptive to the budget as you have approved it. So now, we have to wait and see if the governor signs the budget. So presented for your information or any questions that you may have.
Does that comment or question?
Well, yes. Regardless, if he chooses not to sign it, it's my understanding that it'll be overridden by the legislatures anyway. I think there's enough to do that. So whatever it is, it is. We just need to, as you say, consider what our options and plan on that.
Well, I was trying to look for some ways that would not disrupt what we've already put in place, and I think this would do that. But ultimately, we would come back to you for an approval of a reallocation of funds.
Right. That was my next question. We'll still have to, at some point, provide an action on that, no matter what we end up having to do, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Any further comments or questions? Next item.
The next item is the GLE grading and construction. If you would excuse me just one minute, I need to shut this down and start it back up, because it's lost all my notes. Or I've lost all my notes. I'll let you know in a minute if it comes back up, if the notes are there. It happened to me one time before. I'm not sure what I did, but something. Okay. So this item is about Gilbert-Lincoln Elementary School and some grading and construction easements due to the rebuild of some apartments that's going on there. A company called Related Properties One Limited Liability Corporation is rebuilding the apartment complex, The Edge, which abuts the Gilbert-Lincoln campus. The company has requested a grading easement that impacts our property. The administration has reviewed the request with the Town of Blacksburg Police Department and determined that the grading and the replanning of trees and installation of signage will be mutually beneficial and improve the vegetation surrounding the school. And in general, will improve the joint property line. The administration recommends that the board approve the request for the permanent grading and temporary construction easement for Related Properties One and authorize the board chair and/or the superintendent, should Mr. Jones not be present, to sign a property prepared plat and deed of easement, which grants the construction and grading easement. Basically, it takes that property line, it changes the grade, cleans it up, and replants vegetation that's much more appropriate to the area. So it's presented this evening for your consideration for approval, due to the timeliness of that easement taking place during the summer months. You've got lots of additional information and attachments there.
So you want a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we need a motion.
All right.
Yes, we need a motion.
Okay. I move that we, I'm on the wrong page. What am I moving?
To approve the GLE grading and construction.
Yes, thank you.
Did I hear a second? Okay, I've got a second. I have a question. It does talk a little bit about school security here, but help me gain a little better comfort level about, I mean, this is a brand-new apartment complex, Gilbert-Lincoln is downtown with a lot of foot traffic, you know, there's going to be more, even more foot traffic and more students around the thing. Is it, do we have any concerns? Should there not be, should there not be a fence of some sort?
Is, is there, I'm looking at this, I guess you did too.
Yeah.
Is there a fence that's going to go along that property line?
Dan, is there a fence there? One of the things that we're looking at, we do have the new grant applications for safety and security from the state, and one of the things that we're evaluating it for is to see that if there's any way that we can get additional fencing money for schools that may need it, and we're not sure yet if it would be approved, but Dan can speak specifically to the fencing at GLE.
Two questions. Is there a fence? Yes. It's at the edge of our playground, at the top of the slope, but our property line continues down the slope. We put up the fence about six or seven years ago, was, I think, funded by a grant that the school received for security.
Will the fence stay?
The fence stays, and the grading easement does not affect the fence.
The grading is on the outside of the fence.
On the outside of the fence, yes, sir. Your second question about, concern about new foot traffic, this apartment complex is a rebuild of an existing complex, so there has always been a housing complex there. What the developer has done is they've raised the old one and put up the new one. And the...
But I believe the density of this one is going to be, going to be more people here in this one than the old one, if I understand it.
I think it's, they didn't have to have a zoning change, and I'm not sure about the number of people. But the other aspect of it is, the playground is up at this level, and pedestrian paths and the walking will be done 15 feet below that level.
And where will those, where will the signs be posted on the fence?
Signs will be posted at the bottom of the slope.
Right.
Along the path and at the fence. So, one, it will be hard to get up the slope, and the signs will say, don't go up the slope. And if somebody does go up the slope, there's other signs that say, keep out for official business only.
Okay. Well, as long as there's a fence there. I mean, I think what they're doing is great. I mean, it's obviously going to approve the aesthetics of that area and along the fence line and everything. I just wanted to make sure that we had some protection there.
Yes, sir.
This looks like a fairly recent photograph, aerial photograph, and it's amazing, they're moving in this...
August.
August.
So fast.
Phase one is 100% sold.
Exactly.
Thank you, Dan. And Dan did work directly with the Blacksburg Police Department to talk about safety and security related to the complex and to the fencing and the regrading.
So all the construction will be completed by August 12th?
The first phase, construction, but there's a second phase that's coming in.
Okay.
But it's closer to the street and away from the school, I believe. It's in one of those pictures that you have there.
The grading will be finished.
Okay. And all the vegetation will be in by then, we're assuming? Okay.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? The grading and construction easement is approved.
Next item is the AEP easement for the new Auburn Middle School. The administration has been requested by Appalachian Power Company to request that the Board of Supervisors grant them an easement for permanent underground power lines on school property to service the new Auburn Middle School. The easement will not adversely affect the school in any way, and it has no financial impact to Montgomery County Public Schools. This evening, I recommend that you approve this request and authorize me to forward it to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration.
I make a motion to accept the AEP easement for the new Auburn Middle School.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions?
Yeah. Did anybody look at the Xerox copy of this thing? Because I did, and in my opinion, they're trying to confuse us completely, because I couldn't make head nor tail of that thing.
You want Brad, our lawyer, to interpret for us?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I understand it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's bizarre. Anyway, I guess I'll take their word for it. This is crazy.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Next item is the monthly facilities update, Dan.
First one is complete. It was completed the week that I was reported last month on Tuesday, and it did complete by that Friday. So that's good, that one won't appear anymore. The roofs are on their way. We've awarded those contracts. We have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow for those, and as soon as school gets out, we expect to see some activity there. The other one that has an update is the last one there, the demolition of the Shawville Middle School Annex Building. And the Board of Supervisors approved the funding request that you presented them on June 9th, and we've awarded the contract for asbestos removal. That will begin right after the 4th of July, so right around July 7th. Soon as that is finished, the demolition will begin. I'll mention the projects here that you may see now or in the near future, things going on. The third one down, New BHS Track Branch has been remilling and repaving. The track started last week, and they're continuing this week. When that's completed, there'll be a about 28-day period that everything cures, and then the rubber service contractor will follow. The Harding Avenue...
Question on that. Is that a six-lane or an eight-lane?
Six lanes.
Which means we can't hold any competition, stay white on it.
I don't actually know the state competition thing, but...
I think when we were going through the negotiations, Mr. Iverson, that was the one thing that got cut. Well, yeah, I do remember discussing eight versus six.
Yeah. That's a shame. Anyway, go ahead.
All of our schools, high schools, have the six lane, but it will be a great track.
Well, it won't be that great if you can't run important meets on it, which I think we should be able to in this county.
Right. We do have the Virginia Tech wonderful rubberized track, just about a mile away. There are meets run on and could be hosted by Blacksburg High School. I know Blacksburg High School hosts a meet at the cross-country track at Virginia Tech, so I think that's probably a possibility, if they wanted to do that. Harding Avenue Safe Routes to School Trail and Margaret Beek Safe Route to School Trail. The town has told us they plan to start construction next week after school gets out, and so you'll see those going on. The last three, the grading easement, I had given you a heads-up on that last week, and you just approved that last month, I mean. Also, the water cooler stations, they've been built by the CTE class, and we'll get out there and dig the foundations for those, and you'll see those come up pretty soon. And a new one that came in that we're evaluating now is practice football goalposts. A couple, three years ago, the boosters put them up on the soccer fields next to Blacksburg Middle School, and now the football practice will be relocated to the multipurpose fields up at the new high school, and they'd like to move those up there. And we don't think that'll be any problem, but we do want to review everything. And that'll be, there's a site visit this week with the Booster Club, and I expect that will be done quite soon. Hard one to read, but I would like to say, on the former school properties, there has been one good step forward regards former Price-Fork Elementary School. The rezoning request that was contingent for the sale of the property has been passed by the Board of Supervisors on June 9th, so I expect that sale to go through soon. So that's good news. Finally, the capital maintenance projects, this list. I mentioned last time that we were able to fund to replace the gym entrance doors at Christiansburg High School, and that is one you'll see happen this summer. The latest info we got today was that the doors are under production, and they'll arrive right around the middle of July and be able to be installed, the second part of July, and then that'll be complete.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
If there are no questions, we'll move on to Curtis Ellswick, who's going to do our capital projects update.
It's good to see everyone. I know you've had a long day, so I'll try to be brief in updating you on your capital projects. First off, I wanted to start out with Blacksburg High School and Auburn High School, just to let you know that we are working with the contractor to finish up a few remaining punch-list items that should all be complete before the students get back in August. And then I've got pictures of Auburn Middle School. This is a view, actually looking from the new Auburn High School towards the middle school, kind of the view you can't see from Route 8. You can tell there's a spray foam insulation, that yellow that's on the exterior of the wall there that's going on, low brick is being installed right now, so you should see some brickwork going up here pretty soon. Framing continues, and rough ends for mechanical electrical plumbing continues on the second floor of that area of the building. Picture on your left is the new entrance to the school. Brick is going on the columns to the school. You can see the ephes up at the canopy areas, so that's starting to look really nice. Get an idea of what it's really going to look like. And on the right is the lobby area outside of the auditorium. Paints on the walls. Paints on the walls, you can see the ceiling grids going in. Lights will go in soon in that area of the, of the building. This is the grand stair outside of the cafeteria, you see on your left. And then on your right is the media center with new light fixtures in that, in that room. On your left is the, what the bus loop looks like right now. This will connect the middle school to the high school. The gravel is down, they were actually pouring some, some curb today and that air, that whole bus loop should be paved before students get back in August so that Montgomery County Schools can, can use it to transport students. And then on your right, last picture, is the, actually the student entry and the canopy framing that's going up in that area of the building. A couple other notes. The project is still on target to reach substantial completion in November. I think November 17th is still the date. The weather's been cooperating, it's been hot, but it's been good, which has helped in making sure that we reach that milestone. So with that, I will take any questions.
Board members have any questions from the trails related to the Auburn Middle School project? Here you none, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
And back to you, Mr. Jones. That finishes my agenda.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business by school board members at this time?
Have we done anything with the superintendent's evaluation?
We just need to set a meeting date, which is on the next agenda item.
Perfect.
If we have no other unfinished business for any school board member. So I don't hear any, so we'll move to meeting dates. And there's three items on the meeting dates. We have a board retreat, we have a superintendent evaluation, and we have board professional development, development and training dates. And I think at the last I saw, the doodle poll, Mrs., that you sent out was for the evaluation, the superintendent's evaluation, and it looked like it goes all the way into August. And there may only be one date in August, and that's the Monday before our first meeting, which I think is the second, is that it? It looks like that's the only time anybody is available through the month of...
I was surprised that out of 42 days, we only found one day that is okay for everybody.
August 2nd was that day?
I think it's August 4th.
August 4th. August 4th.
So I don't know if we want to set that date yet or not, but that's the only date. Then you've got retreat dates that we need to set because, you know, along with the superintendent's evaluation, part of what the board retreat would be doing is looking at goals for the, the upcoming year and working with the superintendent and establishing these goals. That would be part of the next year's evaluation. And then in response to the advanced ed is additional board professional development and training dates. So I know that Ms. Franklin is not here this evening and it's really difficult to establish dates without a full complement of people here. But right now...
I think we could do the August 4th date at least, hopefully.
Yeah, I mean, the August 4th date right now seems to be the best one. If something was to change on that date, please let, let us know as soon as something would change. I know it's, you know, it's always something comes up and happens.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, do we want to, it's obvious that the board retreat's not going to occur until sometime in the fall. So do we want a poll now in the fall? Do we want to start something and start looking at the September, you know, October dates? We've got to do it sometime in September, October. So I would suggest that you send out another poll with those dates in it.
Yeah.
May I share one thing, I think, in relationship to the goal? That fall is too late to set the goal. So I would like to ask if the board has things in your mind that you think should be in these goals? That perhaps if you gave them to me, I could at least compile a big list and send it to you and maybe you could start prioritizing. Because as you, if you have looked at the self-evaluation, you know that the goal component is big. And the goal component, I ended up with 10 goals this time. I can't do 10 goals, not and report on them. I can do seven to five goals if I don't have to report on them. But if I have to report on them, I can't do that many. And so we really need to come around some big, important things to this group and build that consensus. And if we could at least get some preliminary direction. You know, when I walk into the schoolhouse in August, I already know what's important. So, and know where the resources are going and, you know, know what kind of things I need to do and what I need to get staff to do. So I need some kind of direction on goals before fall.
Could we all commit to perhaps sending that list to Mrs. Blackburn maybe mid-July or whatever our lot, whatever our ideas are? Ms. Blackburn, would that give you enough time to formulate your, compile that list and put it in a format that would be acceptable to you?
I would suggest that if, to do that, that we probably really need to get me some preliminary information by no later than July the 11th.
Okay.
Because that's halfway through the summer this year.
Right.
So if you gave me your list of what kind of big, important things are on your mind, then I could create a summary list and send it back to you all and maybe you could at least do your top three. I might come out with something that you could, you know, start to get your arms around and then have some more discussion in the fall. But to really get that process going, September is way past time.
Agree.
Do you have a list of thoughts and goals that you have in mind?
I did mine last year. I'm joking with you a little bit, Joe, okay? I, I'm afraid to go there because I might end up with 10 again because I dream big. So, you know, I have some things that are important to me and some of them I mentioned in the self-evaluation. But I would prefer at this point to get some input from you all.
Okay.
Any other comments on the meeting dates? If not, we'll move to new business. Anybody have any new business?
So y'all are going to send me something by July 11th?
By July 11th.
Okay.
Yep. And then we'll work on the retreat dates for the fall.
Send out another poll.
And, and the August 4th is for Ms. Blackburn's evaluation?
Evaluation, yeah. It was my understanding that we needed two days to do that. Is that correct or just one day?
Right now, you got one day.
I, I'm still appalled. We cannot find more than one day out of 42 days. I think we have to set priority and make it happen. That's my two cents.
If I could make a comment, the, on the doodle poll, I think I kind of probably, for me, because it's like the second time I've done it, went and checked what other people could be there instead of just checking the whole two months that I could be there. I mean, I don't have nearly as busy lives as it seems like everybody else does. So I might have only checked four or five dates, but I could have checked the whole time.
You need to go back and redo it then because...
Right, but I didn't know I could do that. I mean, when you made a comment the last two weeks, well, I don't know if we're going to work around that, but I didn't know that I could go back and change it. Plus, I didn't know that that was how I needed to do it.
Before we commit August the 4th in, why don't you go back and look at the dates again, would you please? Maybe we could do it sooner in July.
I can open them all up. But like I said, the ones I checked were the only ones that anybody else could do. And I understand not everybody was in, but four, I think there were like four other people. So there were only a couple other people. Well, even if I checked the ones that someone else was, those were already the only dates somebody could not be there, you know? So, but I'll go back. Or...
When you go, just go, if you would go back and let me and Sarah know if you would. Thanks.
Like I said, you can open up all of them because I'm not going anywhere, I don't have anything to do.
Okay.
But that's a valid point because I did not quite the same thing, but close to it. If nobody signed up for a date, I didn't bother with that date.
Me either.
If only one person signed up, I didn't bother with that.
Well, if you are the first one doing the poll, you can't do that. Or second one, you have to wait that everybody...
What I did is I went back and looked at it again and I said, "Well, no one signed up, so I'm not signing up for those dates."
Well, if something were to happen to like someone else's plans, it would help just for everyone to be adequate with their own individual plans and then...
Yeah, let's do it that way because if there is, we get a bunch of days where there's six of us there. Like, if I'm the, if I'm the seventh one who's not on there, I may be able to adjust my schedule.
Well, let me finish what I was going to say. What I wanted to say is maybe we should all go back and look at that doodle.
Yeah, I agree.
Because, because...
I mean, the way I did it, the way I put all the dates that I'm in town, you know, I mean, only time I'm moving my daughter to Colorado, that's the timeframe I didn't.
So we can pencil in August 4th, but take a look, re-look at that doodle.
So we can come up with at least one more day.
Yeah.
I think we should go ahead and submit August 4th, even if it's not our superintendent evaluation, maybe it can be our retreat date since we all agreed on that one day. We need to do something that day.
Okay, we understand where we're headed?
Kind of.
Any items of new business that board members like to bring?
I have one. I'd already spoke to Dr. Graham about this a little bit earlier, but I was approached by the Family Preservation Services of Virginia as a possible outlet for, to provide some mental and behavioral health services for our children from, actually preschool all the way up through high school. They approached me, they gave me some information. I have it. I'm going to forward it to Mrs. Blackburn and to the rest of the board so you can see what they gave me. If it's something that we're interested in pursuing, they're willing to come in and speak to us to give us a little bit more information about what it is that they do, what they can do and what they can provide. The best thing is, is that it requires no funding from us. It is something that they are already funded by the state to do. So just wanted to bring that out. I wanted to publicly say that and I'll forward all the information to everyone.
Any other announcements, I mean, I'm sorry, items of new business by school board members? Here you none, announcements and information. Anybody have any announcements they'd like to bring forward? Here you none, announcements and information. The next item is agenda prep with the upcoming school board meeting. And as has been a tradition in the past, we will not be meeting in July. And so the next school board meeting will be the first Tuesday in August.
Mr. Jones, if I may make a note that at the bottom of that agenda item, you'll see September 30th, 2014 noted as a potential date for a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. So if you have time to put that on, just pencil it in. We're still waiting for confirmation from them. But it's an extra Tuesday that we have. September is one of our long months this year. And so it will be essentially the fifth Tuesday of that month. So I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Appreciate you bringing that to attention.
We do that two or three times a year?
We try to do it two.
Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a closed session. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So move?
Second.
Okay, I've still got to read the section here. As authorized by Section 2.2371 and A7 of the Virginia Code, it is one legal matter. Although, I need a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're now in closed session.